It is currently six forty-six. I will call to order the Community and Business Relations Committee. All members are present and accounted for. We have one agenda item this evening, and that is the consideration of the July Fourth Parade Route. There's a detailed history in the minute in the agenda from old minutes. Assistant Manager Anderson, you want to catch us up to speed with where we're at and what we're looking at?
Be glad to. And again, I just want to thank you all again for your patience as we've gone to have a few discussions on this. One thing that I wanted to just discuss that came up as clarification from the last time we brought this forward at the April twenty-first meeting is that I recognized that given there were confusions about we had some, you know, costs associated with some were rental, some were not rental, some were included in a Q and A portion that was not included in the memo. So with this new memo, I wanted to just provide a little bit more detail, as well as with the slide deck that I provided to the committee ahead of time, just to kind of break down what the needs would be if we went with the Jersey barriers that was originally in the memo, or if we went with the modular vehicle barriers, because it could be either one of those two. In one path, the goods are purchased, and the other, the goods are rented. But in either scenario, we would still need additional Class Three barricades, as well as roll-up signage, and digital message board rental and private on security if we went back to the original route. So again, the first path, say Scenario A, if we went with what was in the memo with Jersey barriers, that cost was going to be thirty-nine thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars, as you've seen before. And then just to kind of back into that new number, so we knew what we were looking at with the modular vehicle barriers, at a rental cost of thirty-four thousand dollars, that new total, taking out Jersey barriers, would then be sixty thousand one hundred fifty-five. So I hope that's not throwing too many numbers and words at you, but I wanted to just clarify that I know I recognize that there were some questions back and forth at the last meeting.
Okay, are there any additional questions from committee members?
Not for me.
Oh, good. Okay. What's the, what's the will of the committee here? You guys want to do?
Can I just a clarifying question? Is this, is this going to full board, or are we moving forward with this as our committee tonight?
I can see it agendaed for the board.
It's not agenda for the board.
My, well, you can, but my understanding was that it was a recommendation to the board. And then it's not listed on this agenda, correct?
It was not the desire, I don't believe, to have it in the same meeting, because I think that we may have I remember that we did not want to have it come through the same meeting.
The, you know, so possible motions are I move to direct staff to proceed with modified, or I move to direct staff to proceed with previous parade routes. So are we moving that forward then, tonight, just this group?
This group was asked to provide a recommendation. My understanding is that why it has come back here.
The motion, if I may, the motion may have been from the, because the last time we brought it forward was the full village board. So that may have just been an accidental holdover. So I would just say, if we're going to get to the language of recommending to the full village board, then we could just perhaps modify that language a bit. I apologize.
No, that's all, thank you. That's all I need.
Clarification.
Yep. I think, you know, I'm, you know, sort of on the fence with this one. You know, and I've probably actually moved a little bit closer to, to moving forward with a modified version. And it's, it's a very difficult decision for me, you know, I probably don't have as much history in the village as some people do, some of our residents and some of our board members. It's, but it's a parade that I've been a part of for the time I've been here. I think I've, you know, walked in the parade several years. And I really appreciate sort of moving through the village, north to south. Said this many times, but I don't think that the south part of our village gets enough of that attention when it comes to our events. Everything is staged in, you know, in the north part of the village. And this is one of those things, this is frankly, the only thing that that goes to the south of the village. And I am very sensitive to that, and I want to make sure that our, our whole community has the chance to celebrate different sort of festivities. We do have a lot of, you know, senior residents that live in that side of town. I know we've made accommodations for those residents to potentially be bust up here. So I, I am very sensitive to the, the diversity and the inclusion that this, the historic parade route leads to. With that said, you know, we've heard it loud and clear from staff. Every, every, every department leader or department head has, has expressed their desire to modify the parade route because of, you know, every reason you could imagine, from, you know, capacity, safety, cost, the list goes on. So I'm very sensitive to that as well, and I sit sort of on the, in the middle of this one. But, you know, looking over the cost, listening to staff, you know, I have to admit that, you know, in the long run, for me personally, you know, to modify this, this parade is, you know, is probably the, you know, the wisest decision, you know. And, you know, next year, we're going to have, we're going to be in a very similar situation where the parade's going to take a different route because of the construction on Capitol. So, you know, again, I am somewhere on the fence on this one. I'd be interested here what the other trustees have to think, and then our full board. But again, that's kind of what my thoughts are.
And I, you know, I mentioned this last time, but, you know, I, I would just think that we should stick with the 2024 route on the recommendation of Chief Worth and, and other staff, DPW staff. It's just a question of, you know, staff time, the expense, the safety issues. You know, it's kind of sad that you have to plan your Fourth of July parade around somebody using a vehicle to do mass carnage, or, you know, there's been shootings, things like that. So, but that's, that's the reality that we live with. And we have received some email, people wanting to go back to the historic route. You know, we also get requests all the time to be really mindful of what we spend our money on. So I'm just going to stick with how I voted last time, which is to, you know, I, it'd be my preference to just keep the route that we had in 2024 in the interest of safety and saving around forty thousand dollars.
Thank you to both you. For me, I mean, this, you know, I remain in the same position I was before. You know, I think we're, in doing this, I think we're doing a serious disservice to half the community. You know, to trustee Ursing's point, you know, there are not many things, if anything, that occur south of Capitol Drive in the village of Shorewood. You know, we have spent a lot of time, a lot of meetings, frankly, a lot of money talking about inclusion and equity in this village. And, you know, when the time comes to do difficult things, in this instance, I think we're taking the easy route out. I think it's unfortunate. And I think that there are ways to get this done. There were opportunities, and this is from me only, but, you know, there were opportunities where department heads, staff, what have you, didn't want to, didn't want to stick with the old route. And I felt and continue to feel sort of pushback from those entities in trying to make this work. And I think that's unfortunate, because this is a policy decision that should be made by the board without being pushed by other folks in this building. You know, there were certain considerations and efforts made to make Atwater School work. And I appreciate those efforts by Assistant Village Manager Anderson. Again, I don't know that that was ever the preference of the majority of this board. And so I wonder, you know, why we haven't, I don't feel like we have done everything we can do from a staff or board standpoint to make the old route work. And I think it's really unfortunate, and I will probably lose this vote, and that is fine. But it's before. But, you know, again, to the point I made the last meeting, sometimes we are called upon as a village to do things that are hard and difficult, uncomfortable, because it's the right thing to do. And I think that having a parade through this entire community is the right thing to do, regardless of how hard it is. And so I will be voting to keep that traditional route, recognizing that in 2026, we won't have either option. But I will tell you that if I, if and when I lose this, I will be pushing as hard as I can in 2027 to go back to the original and to find the money to do what we should be doing right now. Because again, I, I don't think that's the best. So with that, unless there are comments from others. Yes? Of course. Your name and your address, please.
I'm Jennifer Cooney-Vulpas, four-three-three-one North Alpine Avenue. And I really love the traditional route. I feel like this parade goes through the whole town. And it just seems like it's, it's just something that will keep us all together as a town since there's been a lot of splintering in the past. So I would like to say that I, if you're not going to do it this year, please in 2027, go back to the original route.
Thank you. Any other, we're coming up on time. Any other comments from committee? Any comments from online? Let's see. Was there a motion from committee?
Sure. I move to direct staff to proceed with the modified 2024 parade route and associated activities for the Fourth of July.
Second.
Motion in a second to proceed with the modified parade route from 2024 in 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Vote passes two to one. That is the only agenda item we have for this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned at six fifty-eight. Thank you.
When will we see that on the?
I was asleep at the wheel. All right. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the committee a full to order at seven oh four. All trustees are, are present this evening. And we have one item on the agenda this evening, which is to review the long-range financial plan. And to do this, I will village manager, are you reviewing this or finance director?
I'll provide it over to the finance director.
Okay.
The intro.
Good evening. So we just prepared a simple memo and schedule. The idea of this is to kick off the infrastructure needs for a long-range financial planning. We've updated it for the major infrastructure projects that are all-encompassing in the village and for the board to review and consider as part of the first step of the long-range planning review process. So I'm here to answer any questions or you any other on it.
So just to reset, this is typically the, a place for us to see what is scheduled and how bonding looks, et cetera. The first thing that struck me is that this is the least populated long-range financial plan of my tenure here on the board, because we've completed so many major projects. I thought I would never see southeast area sewer, combined sewers improvement not on a spreadsheet. So this is a time for the board to ask questions due to such a condensed timeline for infrastructure projects. Again, many of what we're looking at will be completed as we look ahead. Yes, trustee Warren?
Just a quick question as I, as I begin to start my role here. I noticed that upcoming or future facilities, Village Hall, five hundred thousand dollars, what are, what is encompassed in?
Rebecca, would you mind taking that one?
Dan, would you like to respond to that?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm, yeah. We did receive a question from trustee Stokbrand that indicated that.
Here.
Oh, the pneumatics here. So all of the temperature controls in here are air-operated and notoriously unreliable. So you get wild temperature swings throughout that? Window?
That's just me. That's not.
But there's more to it than just the pneumatics. There's also boiler down in the basement that's, I believe is from the eighties, and then all the radiators and steam traps that are in all the buildings also need in this building. So it's like a three-step process.
So would yes, so would we lose steam radiators? Would we go to like an all-elect?
No, we would still keep a boiler. It's the most efficient way to heat the building, since we can't put ducting behind any walls. So we would still have radiant heat. It might change it to where it's like, not like a radiator radiator, but it might it all depends on how we want to go with those.
The natural gas boiler?
Uh, yes.
Now it's
Yeah.
And so would, how would the air conditioning be different?
Totally different system. Yep.
So we're just talking heat here?
Uh, heat and HVAC, so they do work in conjunction, but they're different systems. So like if one temperature zone calls for heat while one calls for AC, for whatever reason, heat will kick in.
Okay, and so I, we know how uncomfortable it is here. What other parts of the building are the I mean, I'll scan a little one.
First floor. Yeah, just because it's a big area, and depending on where the registers are, one side will get air conditioning. So mainly like in the lobby gets air conditioning, but where staff works does not.
Even after the remodel, they do anything?
Nope, we didn't do anything with that.
And so how long of a timeframe are we looking at for this? From, from letting bids to, once, once they start, it would, people, we can stay in the building with this during this?
Yeah. No, so like if it's AC that needs to be done, AC's actually in the attic up here. So that can be done whenever. Generally done in the fall, so it kind of doesn't really affect summer, especially if the system's working. Pneumatics can be done whenever throughout the year, because that's usually pretty standard. They go find valve boxes and then convert that over to electric, so that uses an electric motor instead of using pressure.
And so we would not lose access to the building?
No, I don't see why.
You recall, is, is this one of the recommendations that came out of that energy audit we did? Okay.
Yep. That's where that came from.
So we could expect the usage cost to?
Most likely, yeah.
Trustee Warren?
I, I have an unrelated question. And I, I was, I was curious. So I see Oakland Avenue North is twenty twenty-six. Oakland Avenue South is twenty thirty. We have budgeted the exact same for, with road construction and sewers. Given the rate of inflation, budgets be, that's a five-year difference. Inflation is been pretty high. Do we, we be budgeting more? Projects five years?
Right. We're actually, at this point, not actually budgeting anything. This is a roadmap, and I think one of the things we'll find on every single thing that just is in front of you is going to change, right? Because even, even the HVAC between now and when we do the budget, it's going to change. So this is a roadmap based on estimates and experience. So that's where we are with the LRP.
Yeah, I understand there's some flexibility. Like significantly.
Yes, absolutely.
And just a quick reminder for everyone to move their microphones all the way up to their faces when they speak. Trustee Stokbrand.
I'm just looking at the alley reconstruction. I had a complaint from a resident about an alley behind houses, houses that share an alley with Alpine and Ardmore, that the condition of the alleys were extremely bad. So I'm just looking here, twenty thirty-one, when was the last, will we have gone how many years with no alley reconstruction? I just, I think, you know, I haven't seen the visuals myself, but I guess maybe it'd be good to see where that alley is once we get started again in twenty thirty-one. To see how bad it is. If it's bad now, and that's five years out. Well, it's, it can be fluid. I just, I have concerns about no alley reconstruction for ten years based upon resident input.
Will we continue to patch? Yeah, that kind of leads to, did somebody else have their hand up? Okay, that kind of leads to a question that I had, that I'm basically the way that the long-range plan is laid out and where the placeholders are at this time, I'm imagining that if we were to move anything that's scheduled for twenty thirty, for example, up further, that would impact our borrowing capacity for blood laterals and other things that we're committed to.
As previously discussed, the amount of leverage borrowing you can have is set by your assessed values. So as that fluctuates, it will fluctuate with the economy as well. But we do have still about, you know, several millions of dollars that we could be borrowing. So we are not going to come up to that ceiling for a couple of years yet. So I wouldn't focus on that too much for the twenty twenty-six budget process.
Right. Okay, so we're really keeping our eyes on the next, you know, one to two years for the purposes of this spreadsheet. And then we will kind of come back to it as far as what our needs are and what our borrowing capacity is like.
Absolutely. And each audit process, when we conclude that, we go over that threshold with you as part of the presentation from the auditors. So we'll, we'll make sure we continue to watch that.
Great. So yeah, so this is, while we can take feedback on sort of literally the long range, we are, the purposes of tonight is to reset and refocus for the purposes of twenty twenty-six budgeting process. Okay, thank you. Good reminder.
Okay. Yeah, it's pretty anticlimactic, the discussion of most of these projects, because I feel like you have been in all of these projects all year, for the last two years. So it's very typical that in prior years, there have been projects or, you know, different things that we've been doing more education on. But want to provide this to you, and then, and finance is going to come back in June and provide the forecast of what the amount of these projects and this trajectory looks like for the purposes of planning. And so at that time, they'll have more detail to share.
Yes.
I would just like to reiterate, and I've said this before, but my preference would be to hold off on the public works, the twenty million dollars until we're done with the street lighting. I just, we are, we're taking on so much debt at one time that I worry about operational funding when we have, we have to commit so much to debt service. My concern is cash flow for employee wages and salaries and, and just regular operational needs. So that's, I have the same concern.
And then at what point do we look at the performance of the TIDS? Is that usually part of that June meeting?
Yes, when we return in June, the TIDS will be part of that long-range plan full presentation. We should have more information by then, how things kind of worked out for twenty twenty-four, so that we can have some better projections for you on those.
Okay, and then with evaluation, property evaluation, when do we get reevaluated?
Next year, we're going to go through a full market.
Okay.
Reval, and typically that's every other year.
Okay.
So we just did one for the previous budget process for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
So which TID are you?
All of them. We usually get sort of updated performa, performance reports about like when they would be close and how much money is in them.
Yes, each of them is different. I can't recall. But the entire long-range planning review in June will include all of that. This is to make sure that we're not missing any big project that the board would like to undertake or any initiatives that we're not currently.
For twenty twenty-six.
Correct.
If, if at the federal level, the requirements change for lead service lines, we, we could face a different timeline for completion.
Yes, and I think that just goes back to what David was saying earlier. This is just a plan. And we do have good information to back it up from engineers and people with experience, but it is just a plan. And as we continue to get information, the numbers will continue to change as you review this infrastructure and project listing in the future.
I think the other thing to remember is what's not shown on here is the North Shore Fire debt that we have to pay for also, right? That comes out of a cash flow. So it's not here in our long-range plan, but, you know, like the new seventeen million dollar facility in Glendale, we have that debt also. Anything else to be, not just the debt you see here.
Thank you. All right, are there any other questions at this time or points of discussion that you'd like to leave on the record? All right, hearing none, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Okay, I'm gonna, okay. Motion to adjourn by trustee Warren, seconded by trustee Kudo. All those in favor say aye.
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 We stand adjourned at seven seventeen. See you back at seven thirty to convene for the village board. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the village board to order at seven thirty PM. All trustees are present this evening. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for your time, talent, and patience in advance as we conduct business this evening. We have two special orders of business for a National Police Week proclamation. And it is with my, it is with honor that I will read this. It's hard to toggle between. Okay, that one's not working. Oh, did we get these? Oh, well, sure. Yeah, give me both, too. Thank you very much. And I see that we are joined by members of our Shorewood Police Department who serve us every day with honor, and we appreciate that. And don't say it enough, probably. To recognize National Police Week twenty twenty-five and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Shorewood Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, there are currently more than twenty-four thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including members of our neighboring agencies, Glendale Police Department and Milwaukee Police Department. The total line of duty deaths for the state of Wisconsin is three hundred and twelve, including The total line of duty deaths for the state of Wisconsin is three hundred and twelve, including two police canine officers. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D C. Whereas three hundred and forty-five new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring. Including a hundred and forty-eight officers killed in twenty twenty-four and a hundred and ninety-seven officers killed in previous years. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's thirty-seventh. Candlelight vigil, vigil on the evening of May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the candlelight vigil, vigil is part of the National Police Week, which will be observed this year, May eleventh through seventeenth. Whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day. In honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U S flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the Village of Shorewood will observe May eleventh through seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. As National Police Week in Shorewood, Wisconsin. And publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. The Village of Shorewood encourages the community to join the members of the Shorewood Police Department. In this solemn week of national honor by expressing thanks in writing and in person. I'll repeat that, to express thanks in writing and in person. That's next week and every day. And next, I am also honored to read a proclamation for the fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. May fourth through tenth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-modern and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among per, public service servants. And whereas the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Clerk. Through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state. Provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, I and McCag, President of the Village of Shorewood, do recognize the week of May fourth through tenth, twenty twenty-five. As Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk staff. Clerk Harold, Deputy Clerk Chang, and Elections and Licensing Clerk Cook. And to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform. And their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent dated this fifth day of May, twenty twenty-five. Are there any announcements you'd like, aren't we invited in this week for something?
I changed the date. Um, on Thursday, um, uh, May eighth, you all are invited to come down to the Clerk's Department for some yummy treats, starting at eight A M.
Can we also bring treats to?
Please, yes, please, thank you.
And then we're welcome at the Police Department next week, but really any day of the year.
Thank you.
Have a good night, stay safe.
All right, that concludes special orders of business this evening, moving on to item five, consent agenda. Is there a movement to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
I'll second.
Move, uh, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Warren, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the uh, consent agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, um. Skipping through item six, we didn't remove any items, um, there are no public hearings this evening. That brings us to item eight, citizens to be heard, and I believe we have at least one citizen to be heard this evening. Mister. Revholtz? Revholtz.
Sure.
So please, um, looks like you know what to do, come to the microphone and state your name and address, please. And I believe we've been provided with two um, images that pertain to your, uh, the matter you would like to be heard on.
I'm Frederick Thomas Revholtz, sixteen oh one East Menlo Boulevard in Shorewood. I'm here to see if I can get your help with a situation. My house bumps up to the village property, we, our lines of, are together. And the village has the hill going down to the street. And uh. That's the property that we're going to be talking about. I bought the home in nineteen sixty-eight. During that time, I was not required to do anything to that hill. With my mowing, I did to make the corner look nice, I did the mowing in there, but the village took care of that. Just like the village took care of the property by the parking lot across the street. And uh, leading up that hill was very nice, I have a picture of that later if you want to see it. It became determined not too long ago that it was too dangerous for village workers to mow that property. So that's why you see that it's all native type of grass now. The village came in and I had a big, they had a big tree that hung over my house. And it was there until in the nineties. And I called them and said, the branches are hanging over the house and they're getting dangerous to my roof and so on. They came out, looked and determined the tree needed to be removed. Upon removing the tree, they discovered that it was deteriorated inside. And of course, they took it down and all the little ants joined my house. Well, we took that out with the uh, people, got rid of the ants. Then the next thing that was associated with the village was up the hill, a fire came. And so on, because of things being dried out or what it was, and uh, we were concerned about that in the future. So going on, I've been working on that hill from uh. For probably over thirty years and haven't minded at all. I would not allow anybody else to monkey with that hill, because I was afraid if they got hurt, I didn't know what the village would do. If they did get hurt, who would be responsible? And necessarily, I couldn't trust the village that they would claim responsibility, so I couldn't afford to have anybody there. So it reached to this point where my body no longer could handle a hill. So last summer is when it came about, and my neighbors helped me out and I watched them work that hill. And they did not look good and safe on that hill. So I uh. Said, decided this year that I'd go to the village and ask them to take care of things. And of course, then they throw all the ordinances and everything at me. I don't know when this ordinance came in, but it wasn't there in nineteen sixty-eight, and I'm, it was there. Well, in the discussion, we weren't getting anywhere, about that time, a raccoon decided to interfere. And the raccoon came onto the property, that hill, and tore that hill all the way from the street on up to the edge of the property. And all the way from one side to the tree. And so that's what I became concerned with, I think the village should repair that and get that back. And that all for natural from that point, because the hill is dangerous to be maintained or cut by anybody. So my suggestion and recommendation is the village repair the hill, because that's their land. What if I went up there, I mean, I will be eighty-five here in a few weeks. And then, and I can't climb up that hill to repair it for the village, and I don't think that's right. And I can't hire anybody come in and repair it, because it'd be expensive, and I'm not about to spend my social security on that type of improvement. But I'm for letting natural take care of most of the hill, but in order to make it look nice. I want to be able to cut down along the lower grades so that matches my lawn, so that looks good. I have always been interested in Shorewood being a beautiful place to come. And I'm thinking, if they come down in the park and they see all natural up there, it would, it would block out my house and things like that. So that's where I'm at. I think the village should repair what the raccoon did to the hill. My wife was up at three o'clock in the morning, taking pictures of that raccoon scavenging for its food. And I'd appreciate help by the village.
All right, thank you for coming forward, as you know, this is a time to be heard, we, um, the village board wouldn't take action at this time. Um, but we will, I usually follow up on items that have been brought forward.
Okay, well, just to know that I will not be doing anything to that beaver, or beaver, or raccoon damage, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to new business, uh, nine A, consider award of contract for the Southwest Area Land Lead Service Line Replacement Project. Um, this comes to us uh, from Public Works with a standard bid process and um, lowest bid recommended. Uh, is there a motion?
Yep, so uh, I move uh, the award of a unit price contract to Five Star Energy Services in the base bid amount of two million, one hundred seventy-four thousand, five hundred. Fourteen dollars and no cents for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six Southeast Area Lead Service Line Replacement Project.
Is there?
Two thousand twenty-five dash oh six, is that appropriate? Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Nine B, consider award of contract for large sewer pipe televising. Um, this comes to us with, one thing that I find unusual is that the bid um, was higher than the budgeted amount. But you're recommending that we um, accept the lowest bid for, to not exceed sixty thousand dollars. Um, and feel that the project can be completed. Is there anything else that's pretty straightforward?
It's not as straightforward as they'd like it to be, but, but that is a correct um, summary.
Okay. So my one question would be, do you see any um, risk of the? The project not getting done to the extent that we need it for purposes of planning and safety and all that? Um, given that there's a, um, such a variance between the bid amount and the budgeted amount?
That's always a possibility on any project we do when we do a unit price contract. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm certain that we can prioritize the segments to be televised. And get the most critical of those previously identified done under this contract. Um, as mentioned, the, the largest part of the contract was the heavy debris cleaning. Um, from the preliminary investigation that the contractor did on their own. Um, they didn't think that the hundred-ton um, unit specified in the bid. They thought that was far excessive of the actual tonnage that would be um, pulled from those sewers prior to the televising. And that's why, um, so I included that letter from Viju Sewer in the packet, um, that was unprompted. I, I didn't request that letter, they, they provided that of their own accord.
And we've worked with them a number of times, so.
Um, almost exclusively in my tenure here, they've gotten our televising contract.
And we'll be better off than we are now with this information, so moving ahead makes sense. All right, with that, I would uh, take a motion, um, or if there's another technical question.
So I just want to make sure I understand what we're, so this is, it says, large pipe televising. Then it says the sewer budget utility includes sixty thousand for this lining.
Oh, I apologize, that's, that is.
There's no line here.
That's a typographical error, it is entirely for um, televising.
But also heavy cleaning.
So you, in order to televise a line, you have to clean it. And because the majority of the millennial footage included in this contract is storm sewer. It's a bit of an unknown, we typically don't televise storm sewer, and we never clean storm sewer. We regularly clean our sanitary lines, but we don't regularly clean the storm lines. That is why the, the hundred-ton was, you know, a bit of a dart at the wall, nobody really knows, um, and Strand, when they put together. Um, their cost projections, they tend to be very conservative.
And so this, this will, is this every storm sewer in the?
No, it is not, it is the, the critical deep storm sewer. This is in response to the, the Big Bay issue. Um, so we are identifying our critical storm sewer and our deep sewer um, to, to televise those to um, identify whether. You know, what kind of shape that infrastructure is in.
So, for example, the one by my house, like Lake Drive is all torn up. Will you do that one, will you do the one at forty-four eighty that we rebuilt? I mean, I'd kind of like to know.
We do not need to do forty-four eighty, because it's new infrastructure.
Okay.
Um, but we, we do intend to do the wood, the wood outfall, yes.
And how soon, I mean, obviously, it would be great if we know this sooner than later before we do the budget. Know what we're looking at if there's a big problem.
Right, that's noted in the memo, that the, our request is that they have the work done in September, so Strand can analyze and provide recommendations for budget consideration.
Trustee Warren?
I, I think my question is some, some, similar to trustee Stokabrand's, I was just, it, it's kind of in the same vein of. I'm assuming all the cleaning is done first.
Yes.
And then, then, so, so we'll know right off the bat, we're going to go.
Well, so they'll, they'll clean the line they're mobilized to televise.
Okay.
So they won't clean every line and then televise every line.
Okay, that was my question, I was questioning the ordering, so we could come up, there could be a surprise somewhere in there, we won't know exactly what the cleaning cost is until the end.
No. Um, so if we have four different segments of line, they'll clean and televise. A, they'll clean and televise B. Then we evaluate where we are on budget before we go to C and D, and, and that's in priority order.
Okay, yeah, so I'm just curious as to how the project, how the.
Yes, trustee Stokbrand.
And how is this piece of equipment different than the truck that we got when the, when the televising, was it a televising deal that fell apart with Mequon and Brown Deer?
This is large, deep pipe.
So it's a different size of it?
Yeah, um, there are no municipalities that own that equipment.
All right, is there a motion?
I move the uh, award of a unit price contract to Vishu, Visu?
Viju.
Viju Sewer for uh, the two thousand twenty-five large pipe televising in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Stokbrand, any further discussion?
I'm just wondering, how often would you say we, have we ever done this before? No. Is it something that would become part of a, a regular maintenance plan for our storm sewers, given that we have old infrastructure? Like every ten, depends on what they find maybe, right?
So, this is, this is, this is large pipe, deep storm. Um, the vast majority of our system is small pipe, shallow storm. Um, I'm not aware of any municipalities in the area or any best practices. Where municipalities regularly clean storm sewer. It's just not a thing, typically because you have high-volume, high-scour events that clean that pipe naturally. It's just not a thing, typically because you have high volume, high scour events that clean that pipe naturally. So I at this point wouldn't recommend implementing a cleaning system for our our regular storm sewer system. Um, we'll certainly evaluate what we need to may need to do on a more regular basis with the deep, large pipe storm. That that.
And it seems like.
This process will inform that.
Yeah, and it seems like the really critical information is that if any are in um a situation where they're they could fail. And we would want to be proactively aware of that. And then that might result in an infrastructure cost that we would have to plan for. But it doesn't sound like this is going to result in any kind of um reoccurring operational expense.
Not, I would say not reoccurring on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Um, it it may be that, you know, there's a condition determination that it looks, you know, it it's in good shape for now. Recall, we we did a similar televising of a large combined pipe. Um, last year, recall, we were talking about a lining that was going to um require some people to to vacate their homes for a period of time. All that discussion. Um, and so that we could line that pipe rather than replace it. And then ultimately, we um got some additional televising footage and determined that the pipe is in um stable condition. But there was a recommendation from the engineer that we now televise that pipe every five years. Five to 10 years. So that just goes on a maintenance plan whereby with that size of pipe, we might not do it that frequently.
Thank you.
And so the one we put in on, obviously is brand. What would you call, is that high volume? Or is that more of just?
Um, that's that's a combined sewer pipe. This is storm.
Great, thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving to uh nine C, consider approval of curb extension at the northeast corner of Morris and Capitol intersection. Uh, this comes to us from the Public Works Committee. There's um an extensive history in the memo. Um, that is pretty straightforward. Is there anything you want to add, trustee Ursink?
I would say that this is just part of our ongoing conversations about pedestrian safety in the community, especially at the intersection of Capitol and Morris. Um, this uh came up as an opportunity and to look into and um and we've gotten to the point where we're here right now. So I think this is a great uh a great step into continuing to um make Capitol and Morris a as safe as possible for our residents and our students.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would love to make the motion. Uh, let's see. Uh, so um I move that staff and the village engineer proceed with the design of a green infrastructure curb extension bump out at the northeast corner of the intersection of East Capitol Drive and North Morris Boulevard. Utilizing MMSD Green Solutions funding for engineering and construction to be supplemented with Shorewood Sewer Utility Professional Fees Engineering Funds. Seconded.
All right, motion by trustee Ursink, seconded by trustee Warren. Any discussion?
Just to clarify, so we're approving this now, but it's not going to happen until construction year twenty twenty six. Um, and I, a resident did make me aware, there was a pedestrian was struck at that intersection by an SUV. Uh, it was on the west side. Earl was within the lab week. This is the other side, but I I am agreeing with trustee Ursink. Anything we can do to prove a pedestrian safety? The driver was cited.
Thank you.
She's okay. I had a technical question. Um, so what is the impact to the drivers? Is this essentially a bump out that would um cover the parking lane so that somebody couldn't go around a driver in the parking lane or in the bus stop? So it's just like a bump out.
A standard curb extension into the parking lane.
Okay, thank you.
And right now it's a right turn. So bus bus lane, right turn. So that'll be.
Did they move the bus? Is that the deal they're going to move the bus stop or does it not?
Um, we would be looking at shifting the bus stop east. So it would pull in prior to the bump out. Out of traffic.
Said yes.
Yes, we've reviewed multiple configurations with them. This was the preferred.
And then would that eliminate parking spaces? Or just shift where they are?
It it would eliminate a couple. I forget. Um, it would not, it it basically would restrict parking then from the driveway. Um, into the that building with um retail all the way to the corner. So I don't, I don't recall exactly. It is between one and three spaces.
And I would say that just being a resident and living over there and interacting with that area, it it there's not a lot of parking on that. And that street anyways, right there, so.
I guess there's not a lot of parking, you mean? When you say there's not a lot of parking, do you mean there's not?
There's not a lot of cars that are that are that are on that street daily. So.
Parked on that street.
Parked on that street.
The interesting observation there, high density, there are buildings there, but um.
Oh, I want to tell you.
Yeah. Um, okay, that was my question. Thank you. All right. Um, and are is any of that information in our packet? I didn't see um any images. No, okay.
But they are like the ones um on Downer. That's what they're.
Yeah, I was looking at how I know when we did Oakland, we would have um images of how it affected parking spaces and things like that. So. Um, I I do, I mean, I support this type of infrastructure. I just personally feel like I don't have enough information to understand so that if a resident came to me and um who lost parking, for example, I wouldn't have much of a response. Um, so I think, I mean, I abstain from this. Um, but otherwise, is there any other discussion at this time?
I'm I guess I'm going to support it, but I'd love. If some sort of visual representation, if some sort of visual representation could be sent around so we could in fact answer resident questions, but I I will support them.
It exists. It's been a part of our PETA or Public Works Committee, I think we had. Uh, maybe it's examples.
I don't have any kind of concept drawing because we haven't begun any engineering yet. Um, but we did talk about the location in Public Works and distribute examples of what it might look like, but not overlaid on that location.
Yeah.
I don't have the ability to do that.
Yeah, so that's I I kind of lost where we were in the process. So this is actually just approving to go ahead with engineering.
Yes.
And then that would come back to us.
Typically, it does not, but if you'd like it to, we can certainly um and, you know, make that a step in the process.
So utilizing Google Earth, uh, there are two parking spaces.
Well, thank you.
And only two parking spaces. So if we push the bus back, we'll lose two parking spaces, depending on how far back it goes.
Thank you for that quick um millennial approach.
Next, don't ever call me that again.
I'm just curious, is is the plan to have this be like pavers that were that are permeable or to put plants like?
It will look, as noted in the memo, it will look like Downer.
But it's like grass.
Landscape plantings that are selected for their ability to tolerate wet versus dry conditions.
It'll look a lot nicer than the drive.
Your neighbor to the left can give you firsthand experience since he's the proud owner of one.
This is it.
It's also done, yes.
If we could, um.
Yep.
We got some sidebar going here. So thank you. Um, well, thank you. I appreciate that. That's the information. I feel more comfortable. I can support the motion now. So with that, I'd like to, if that's, there's no further discussion. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Nine D, consider allowing multiple block party permit application to be submitted for Nor- North Morris roadway closure for trick or treat in twenty twenty five. So this comes to us from Community Business Relations, correct? Or was it Public Works?
Uh, Community Business.
It comes through us?
Okay.
Um, with all the information in the packet. Um, is there anything else that you'd like to share, trustee Kudo?
Nope, we have diagrams, we have the history uh of the conversation and the agenda. It's pretty straightforward.
All right, with that, I would open it up to questions or emotion.
No, I should, you know, I should probably add to that just because this um, you know, this is a, I think this is a conversation that trustee Kudo and I started. Um, because of the issues that we have, not issues, I shouldn't say I want to call them issues, but the activity on Morris during trick or treat is um can at times be very problematic and and unsafe. Um, living right, living right on Morris again, um, I routinely see, you know, near miss accidents with kids running across the street. Um, drivers not really um being attentive, uh, very bad traffic situations. It's it's dangerous sort of, it's a very dangerous situation to what is supposed to be a very sort of fun and engaging day in the community. Um, so out of that, you know, out of that issue, we we talked and we thought, well, this would be so cool to just have a block party, block off a couple of street, block off the street and um and invite people onto onto our street and make it a much safer and then um uh and like embrace the community that's coming to our community and and do something fun. So those conversations kind of got it started. And as we got through this process, it became, you know, obviously getting the chief involved, getting a village man involved, getting DPW involved. It became a very sort of in-depth, you know, process of, you know, needing needing cars, needing, you know, needing cars to block the barricades. And and it just got really in-depth. And then it and then it started to become that I was the permit holder and I was going to be the one running this event. And it was going to be like kind of all on me. And uh, you know, the more thought I put into it, like, I want to make it happen. I love putting on events, but what's my capacity? Where am I at at um putting on an event and making it kind of up to the standard that I have for our community? And that I'd want to see it happen, especially in my neighborhood with my neighbors. Um, you know, I'm getting stuck there, right? I'm getting stuck at the that that sort of level. So I really want to see this happen. And I and I will also add that it's the last day of our farmer's market. And uh, I kind of need to put the energy into that day as well. So that goes till one or two o'clock and trick or treating is, you know, at the same exact time. So for me to be at two places at once, to put all that energy into both these events, it's um, it's very hard for me. So um, while I really think this is a a strong idea and I think it could be very successful and I'd love to, I have visions of this happening. Um, where I stand currently is I don't necessarily want to be the one in charge of this. So um, we are probably six months out. Um, I know people want to know sooner than later. I I would say that, you know, potentially deferring this uh to committee one more time. So we can kind of work through some of those details would be appreciated before we vote on it tonight. Um, because I think something can come out of this. I think we can make something happen. I just want to make sure that the pieces are in place where the responsibility isn't falling directly on me. And I can't sort of raise to the level of quality I want to see here in the community.
So I just wanted to advise that the motion within the packet doesn't um identify um trustee Ursink as being the block party captain. Um, and thank you for your for your sharing those things. So if there were an alternative person who um would, you know, be able to assume coordination and communication, that they could do that as well.
And I don't, I I a hundred percent don't mind sort of getting the conversation started in my neighborhood. I mean, I know everybody on that block between me and trustee Kudo. We we know everybody on either side of the street. And, you know, we can kind of get that moving. And if there is help there, um, that would be greatly greatly appreciated because I can, there's so much that I can do pre- uh pre-planning wise, but like day of, like, I'm just going to be sort of stretched thin.
As a, as a point of clarification, my understanding is that this, what we were voting on tonight was basically the process by which someone could apply for a multiple block party, multiple block, block party permit.
Correct, this specific closure.
Right, so.
Okay.
This isn't on you at all specifically. This is, what this says is that if someone from that area, or perhaps anywhere really, wanted to close those blocks, they could. And then further conversations would follow. So I don't, I don't feel like if we vote yes on this tonight, that this is on you at all. Because if no one else steps up.
And I do know neighbors, I do know neighbors that would that would be interested and and want to get involved. But um, again, I just want to reiterate, I think as conversations kind of progressed, it seemed like more and more that this would be my sort of responsibility. And I just wanted to clarify that that I'm not there right now. You know, I I will help as much as I can, but I I just can't have this all on me. So um, but I do, I do want to see something happen with this. So I'd love to, I I think we we can move this forward. I'd be interested in moving this forward to see where it goes. Um, and then uh, and yeah, so where I'm at.
Yes.
So I guess I'd be eager to know the difference between a block party permit and this multiple block, block proposed, multiple block, block party permit. And how much of this is specific to this closure that involves Capitol? Because isn't that the most important point here is that there's you just, it's so much more dangerous because it's traffic off of Capitol, or am I wrong?
Well, I mean, I I would propose looking at the map too, and and we can have a conversation with the chief to, I think there's a street that goes uh one further, a block in. Then I think it'd probably be more, Elmdale would be more appropriate to close down. And so people could go, could still turn uh from Capitol to Morris. And then they could go down, um, you know, they could go down Elmdale and it would be closed right after Elmdale. And then we could put no parking on Elmdale for that for that day.
When you're looking at that, that section of block, what you're looking at is north of Elmdale. So starting at Elmdale, going north on Morris, past um.
Kenmore.
Kenmore and stopping at Olive. So on the on the eastern side of the street, it's one continuous block. On the western side of the street, Kenmore would be the only intersecting street.
I would actually propose closing Kenmore at Woodburn, uh, Woodburn. It it would just.
You could do that and.
It would cause chaos if people were to drive down there and get stuck down there and not be able to turn around. And it it would be too chaotic. So I would close Kenmore at Woodburn. So then you have Olive, Woodburn uh would be open, Kenmore would be closed to Morris. And then, you know, you can utilize Triangle Park for, you know, activities.
Yeah, I mean, I think that you could, you could hammer out the details at a later date, right? This is, this is just more of a.
Yeah, sorry. We apologize.
This is more of a.
I applaud the, you know, the the thinking through the process of it. Um, that map was provided based upon a discussion we had in committee. Obviously, as you see here, and you know, we're asking for that block party captain because to answer Kathy's question, it is usually with the block party or just closing one end and then the other. And in this one, you have multiple different points of of closure and hard closure, soft closures, right? So that we kind of get people staggered out of that area. Um, so that they're not driving through, you know, in different ways. So that's the difference, right? I mean, typically when we have a block party, it's two ones that get closed. But now, right, the the secondary differ- or the second difference would be that this one is closing in, you know, next to an arterial, which would be Capitol. Um, so most of our blocks don't have anybody.
So most block parties don't have a car on each. And and this, that's a requirement for this one, right? You have to have all the vehicle icons, so they want block party people involved, have to make sure there's a vehicle and there's a key board where they put the keys and everybody knows you can't get your car out.
I, I again, I think we're, we are probably going past what we've talked about in committee, just bringing it forward. I think getting the details ironed out is for whomever decides they want to request a permit to work not only with the village but with the police department. Tonight is just basically saying that we will allow for that permit to be requested. And that that's it. You know what I mean? So we don't, I mean, we could go back and forth on how we would do the event, what it would look like, where you would park cars. But that's.
I would just say, it sounds like it's going to take a lot more police input. And so I would want to make sure that the permit is as more expensive.
I, yeah, I might.
I don't see any pricing here.
I definitely have a different interpretation of the action that we're being able to take um or that we're being asked to consider this evening. And so for. And so for that reason, since I'm not clear, and, um, I think it would be good to have it go back to committee because that would, the basis of my questions today to the village manager was it feels like this is, I think it's good to talk about whether this scenario would, um, be able to occur. And then what permit, um, any closure to the street requires a permit. And so what kind of permit? Is it a block party permit? Is it a special event permit? Is it a street festival because it's multiple blocks? Um, I think we should, to Trustee Stokbrand's point, um, take a little bit more care with this. Um, and I know from being a block party captain, that every block party permit has to have a captain with it. Cause so there's a point of contact in, in case, um, so that does need to occur. But those block party permits don't usually come to the village board, right? So we're kind of like in between this thing. So I would like to send it back to committee, um, because I don't want to be voted, taking action on something that again, I can't explain, you know, to the next person that comes up.
Maybe this is a question for, uh, the village manager, but do we have any kind of hard time constraints here?
No, we are doing, having the discussion in prep, um, primarily because we're going to hit the season very shortly where people are requesting block party permits. And at some, at some of the discussion that occurred at committee, there was the thought that some blacks do this already. Um, but they're just not often arterial and they're not multiple streets that are accommodating the closure. So we wanted to try to plan in advance, um, and had talked about the fact that we don't have capacity to do a bunch of these multiple block closures in different areas of the community. Um, and that there was discussion, discussion that should someone come forward, um, a block party captain and want to apply for this permit, that, um, it'd be more of a pilot. I think that's the verbiage we used, at least in discussion, discussion to see, oh, okay. Like would this actually work? Would, you know, does it not, what's the pros and cons because it's just not been done before? But to address your specific question, I apologize. No, we didn't set a timeline on it, other than needing to, um, be sure that they're, I think we should like maybe have like a timeframe. And that's something maybe I can talk about with Toya, but like, we would need to know at some point whether there's going to be this or not because it would need to be planned for.
I mean, I really think, uh, one committee meeting, you know, we can, we can really hash out a lot of this, you know, a lot of the details and, and get back to you pretty quickly here.
I have a, I have a motion.
Okay.
Unless there's more discussion, but I would just move to remand, uh, new business item D back to the Community Business Relations Committee.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to. Does anybody want to read the next? I'm having trouble loading.
Consider RFP occupant for available space in Village Center.
Hmm, this comes to us from Strategic Initiatives Committee. Is there anything you'd like to add, Trustee McGovern? Or would you like to make a motion?
Um, I mean, the memo really explains everything. Um, this is just a question about what to do with the space vacated by the North Shore Health Department. There's a couple of different ideas out there and the way you formally get those is, and consider them is through an RFP. So we, um, approve this RFP language in committee and bring it to the board. Uh, so I'm ready to make a motion unless then further discussion. I move to recommend to approve the RFP, um, occupant for available space in Village Center Lower Level.
I'll second.
Um, motion by Trustee McGovern, seconded by Trustee Warren. Any discussion? Trustee Stokbrand?
Yeah, I just looking for some insight into the, the statement. It's important to note that space planning, programming, information forward slash referrals and ESAB policy and the age-friendly plan all need to transition into a parallel process rather than one before the other to provide service delivery for elder services. What does that mean?
Oh, you're in the memo, sorry.
Yeah, it's right above the March three date. It's on page two fifty, two sixty, two fifty-eight of the packet. I mean, what things, so we've got things that need to be in a parallel process. So you're talking about the basement, this health service department, department space, is that what?
For this, it was primarily ESAB, um, looking at how they're planning for their department area, um, collectively, collaboratively moving forward. We've had staff that's been with us for many, many years, but forecasting, you know, what that looks like for purposes of transition and roles and responsibilities as it relates to that service delivery.
And what does that have to do with this?
Um, there has been an expressed desire from the SRC to have additional space in that lower level. Um, you know, space discussed in general, um, but there is not additional staffing to, um, put in multiple spaces within that area.
Right, and I guess that would be my concern would, would be that at this point, given the budget, unless they have more money from the Benjamin, we're not in a position to expand any senior service. I mean, that's just the.
Yes, and I've, I've had conversations to that extent, just because of talking about all of the budgetary needs that we've been talking about, um, here at the village and the space that is available. And, um, you know, I think that one of the reasons, and members of Strategic Initiatives can jump in, um, but one of the reasons we wanted to get this put out there is that we wanted to see, right? Is someone interested in the space? Do they have a proposal for how they would use the space and move forward? Um, I have relayed, um, that we don't have funding earmarked, nor is any reflected within the scope of the LRP, um, for additional improvements, improvements in the space. So as a part of the RFP, that is, you know, one element that's talked about. Um, but I, I think it shouldn't preclude us, right? From asking all parties, um, whether it be them or any, any, this is put out there to everyone, anyone in the village who would like to submit, whether that be a village organization, a non-village organization. Um, it's one of the items that I mentioned, um, at the meeting of which I attended at the school board, you know, letting them know that that space is vacant and that we'd be doing a proposal. Um, so the, the list of who this will be sent to will be far and wide.
So let's say you're, I'm a member of the Shorewood Women's Club and they have a meeting space. So how, I guess I'm wondering if there are groups in the community would like to meet there, but don't require staffing other than scheduling a meeting space. Does this allow them to put input into what happens to space? Like, could it be turned into more meetings? Is that something we should be, should somehow include in this? Cause I hear that a lot from stations. Be, part of it is the problem with, and I'm going to bring this up at budget time. We need to find a way to make that large room functioning. We have to either get rid of that divider that doesn't divide or give up on it. But there's a need for meeting space in the community. And I just, I'm wondering if this offers that possibility for groups to say, hey, I, I would sure like to see more. I mean, like we seem to have the small, is it the spectrum room? And then we have the huge room and then we seem to have nothing. Although there is a second, there's the health department did include a, about the same size as a spectrum. And we're just wondering, are we thinking about different options here? That would include groups that may not think, oh, I don't, I can't respond. You know, it seems to be more.
Maybe Trustee McGovern.
Yeah, I mean, the, we got this in the first place. Um, the, the committee was asked to find, are there ways to get revenue out of this space? But that's, that's initially why we started to look at it. And, you know, maybe there is somebody out there that wants to sign a lease for some office space there. We, we just don't know. Regarding using it for, you know, public meeting space, I mean, the board could just decide to do that too. If we don't get proposals we like, or if we don't get proposals at all, that's always an option. But it, this is just a way to formally take input, take proposals, um, and then.
For a lease, so that would be different.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, there isn't room in that, in this for that use that you're talking about.
Well, I am interested in seeing, you know, obviously if we could lease it and get some revenue. Here from, wasn't huge, but you don't know what you don't know until, so, uh, I'm eager to see what, what response we get. And then based upon. But I just, I, you know, so the library might respond, rec department might respond, and your resource center might all private or public. Anyway, okay, well, thank you very much for this, putting it together and I could.
Can I provide just one additional item of clarification? One of, in the, the RFP was purposefully written in this way because the, the committee did not, there wasn't consensus over what a lease should be or not be, right? So someone could submit a proposal hypothetically and say, like, for a dollar, right? For one year or something. But I think the consensus of the group, again, correct me if I'm wrong, was to make it as, um, cast a broad net. So allow people to just respond to tell us versus thinking up what could be.
Right.
Thank you.
I do like the fact that this is aimed at optionality or options. You know, you see something we like, we can take that option. Now we can, some way, afford it. And I can make them, I'm not sure if we had the motion made yet.
Yep.
So we have motion on the floor, um, to support the RFP.
Okay, okay. Look at you.
Yeah. So if there's no further discussion, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the final item in new business, nine F, consider resolution 2025 dash zero six, amending the fee schedule for an annual streetlight operations special charge. Um, this is a procedural follow-up to the, um, ordinance that we, uh, passed, um, recently. Uh, so there, I would open it for questions at this time or, um, a motion. Yes, Trustee Arndorfer.
I can make a motion.
I have.
Uh, I move to approve resolution 2025 six, a resolution creating an annual streetlight operations special charge.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Arndorfer, seconded by Trustee Kudo. Any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Yes.
Trustee Warren?
Aye.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
President McCaig?
Aye.
Trustee McGovern?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, that concludes new business for this evening. Now we move on to reports of village officials. Um, the village president, we have, uh, two more proclamations for our, um, long-serving Shored Foundation members who have termed out. So recognizing community leadership and service, uh, whereas the Shored Foundation just completed its 60th celebratory anniversary year. And whereas the Shored Foundation provides an incredible opportunity for Shorewood residents and friends to support the community's institutions, facilities and services to enhance the character and quality of life in the village of Shorewood. And whereas funds raised and held by the Shored Foundation remain in Shorewood, benefiting the Shorewood community and residents. And whereas Sadna Marado Linball has completed her eighth year of dedicated volunteer service to the Shored Foundation, including presiding two years as its president and leading it into its 60th anniversary year. Now therefore be it resolved that the village recognizes Ms. Marado Linball for her exemplary leadership, dedication and service to our community, maintaining our charm while enhancing Shorewood's vibrancy and attractiveness for residents and visitors alike. Dated at Shorewood, Wisconsin, this fifth day of May, 2025. And in addition, a proclamation recognizing community leadership and service, uh, whereas the Shored Foundation just completed its celebratory 60th anniversary year. And whereas the Shored Foundation provides an incredible opportunity for Shorewood residents and friends to support the community's institutions, facilities and services to enhance the character and quality of life in the village of Shorewood. And whereas funds raised and held by the Shored Foundation remain in Shorewood, benefiting the Shorewood community and residents. And whereas Alan Puritan has completed his 10th year of volunteer service to the Shored Foundation, including the maximum allowed three consecutive three-year terms, including serving two years as its president and three years as its treasurer, including the final year as a special exception to our bylaws. Now therefore be it resolved that the village recognizes Mr. Puritan for his exemplary leadership, dedication and service to our community, maintaining our charm while enhancing Shorewood's vibrancy and attractiveness for residents and visitors alike. Dated at Shorewood, Wisconsin, this fifth day of May, 2025. They are not here, but we'll give them a round of applause. All right, and then the next, uh, village president report is just calling your attention to the standing committee and committee liaison appointments, um, that are contained within the packet. And then finally, um, just the notice that there are two, um, MMSD board position or commissioner positions, um, available. And I'm just, um, providing this information to make it available in the community, um, in case you know anyone who would like to apply. So all the information is there. And then that concludes my report. Any village officials, uh, village trustees? Yes.
Yep, I visited Christina Stritty's seventh grade civics class last Monday. They, they went to the Capitol the week before to hear all about state government. They've been studying constitution and government, different levels of government. So I went to give the, uh, you know, local government perspective and very interesting. Got a lot of smart seventh graders in this community. So, um, glad I was able to get out and talk about village government.
Thank you.
And I chaperoned that trip to Madison for the third time in my career, although I only have two students.
Interesting.
Um, Batwater couldn't go, uh, because of COVID three years ago. And so half the kids had been there, the other half had not been there. It was another delightful day spent inside the Capitol, um, and walking around. And, uh, Representative Madison, our representative, was kind enough to join the students and, uh, had lunch with them and took them on a, a brief tour and answered a bunch of questions. So thank you to Representative Madison and to, uh, as always, the fantastic teachers who put this together in the Shorewood School District and made sure that the students had hands-on opportunities to, uh, to see how our state government and through Trustee McGovern, how our local government works.
You, anyone else? Trustee Stokbrand?
I was able to attend the Historical Society Talk about Shorewood Architecture sponsored by the Senior Resource Center. There were about three dozen people there. It was well-attended and always interesting. In the large meeting space, the big one. It was almost full.
All right. So with that, I will pass it on to village manager.
Um, included under my report is the, the PowerPoint of the Q1 update on work plan. Um, you can look forward to seeing initiatives come to you for discussion end of May, beginning of June, um, for those that are, have been submitted for the following year. Um, so things have gotten off to a start this year of note. Um, because it was also listed on tonight's agenda was the annual streetlight operations charge, which has been finalized and, um, work, the communication plan has now been updated. So we kind of had to back into that timeline and I'm learning through the process. Um, so you'll see that I have, and will be hosting a public meeting on the streetlight charge here, um, in the courtroom for anyone who'd like to attend, just to talk about the basic mechanics of it. Um, but there's going to be a PowerPoint that's also released and circulated in our media leading up until that point. It's hard for me to gauge interest. So if anyone has a barometer on that, I'm always, um, happy to, to hear it.
Until you get a bill, you, that'd be my guess.
Which is why, thank you, um, why I, initially we're going to do education in advance, but I didn't think that anyone would pay attention to me. So, so all of the communication and kind of how we're pushing it through our media sources begin once that bill is, is let for this, um, this May billing cycle. So, um, I meet with the bid this month, um, that week that bills will be processed, um, public meeting. Public meeting that following week. My direct line is listed on all of this communication. So if there is a question, or if you know of someone who has a question, the easiest thing to do is simply to call. Or I'm happy to talk through, you know, someone's individual charge, one-on-one. We also have developed, I'm sure some of you maybe have clicked on the link that I've sent you at Bata GAS webpage that shows each individual property and then the linear feat of the calculation made on their parcel. And then what that translates to from that annual charge. So it's gotten good feedback, at least from the realtors. So they echoed, you know, that that was a good thing. We did that because it's easy for them when they have people looking at property or to also find the information online in a more visual way. But always learning, always growing with you. So if you can think of anything else, let me know. But in the meantime, that's going to be my, my pivot point with the communication plan over the next 30 days.
Did I miss, when will people get there? Is it with the next quarterly water sewer?
Yes.
And it will be retroactive, begin annually, so it'll be.
So for the first year of implementation of the annual charge, everyone will see that spread across three billing cycles. Because it has. Correct, correct. And the reason we can't do it on the first billing quarter is that we need to actually expend the funds in order to bill for the amount charged. We spent well over that amount because of all of the equipment and the, quite frankly, just the poles and the infrastructure that have been purchased to be installed with respect to the phase one construction. But you'll see it in this first year, just as the implementation year over the first, the next three billing cycles on your utility bill. And then every year following, it will be divided up. The annual charge will be divided up and spread equally over the four quarterly billing cycles.
And so would a, by the time you get to 2030, the install is done. And you're just paying off bonds, would you expect that number to bounce? The bill?
I would not say significantly. I think we're going to experience, because if you'll recall, the board has just philosophically chosen a different way to look at streetlights, they're paying for the operational costs. So as LED light fixtures become installed, you know, you're going to see as we have with Capitol, or pardon me, Oakland Avenue, some of your costs for electric decrease. And that's what's good about adjusting that fee annually, because it's, we're going to, we're not, we're going to, every year from a budgetary perspective, we're going to be looking at the cost of what it takes to operate that system and then planning for it that way. So that we're aligning the actual interest rate assigned to funds, as well as just what that operational cost may be. And I would, I'm sorry, am I talking too much of a slithery? Oh, okay. So with the, you know, with the streetlight system in general, it would be intuitive that we won't have as much maintenance as we do now. Because we're putting together just a new.
New equipment, LED. Those two things should.
Correct.
It also includes, we're doing trafficking.
No, the, just streetlights. We're going to be separating it out next year on the budget, just so they're in two different categories. Right now, they actually are. So that, you'll always see that as being distinctly different.
Oh.
Are there any operating streetlights yet? Any of them up yet?
The streetlight?
The ones?
The new, I'm sorry, I was, I was thinking you're referring to the traffic lights and I was like, oh gosh, yes. No, not at this time.
I forgot during my report to share and show the award plaque for the southeast area combined sewer. I think that it looks like the cover of Abbey Road.
I know, but we should have had PPW people walking through, right?
Wouldn't that be great?
Yeah.
I thought so too.
I think actually we could update that ourselves.
Photoshop, totally.
You have the technology.
You got the master of Photoshop.
Okay, well, that's, I, we can't take action, it's not agenda, but we'll bring it, we'll remand it to committee. Okay. All right, that concludes, there are no future items for consideration this evening, no closed session. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Any objections? We are adjourned at eight thirty-seven. Thank you. Arthur.